Hello, it's everybody. I'd like to call the special meeting of the 2006 Zoning Order. So you can call the roll.
Yes, I can. Mike Kavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson, here. Virginia Lewis, here. Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Thank you. Brittany had informed me on Saturday that she thought it was not going to be here tonight. So we do have an alternate, but it'll be the four of us. And for the public and anyone that might have joined us online, and we do have some folks online. Let's just verify. I don't have my mic on. It's on now. Is that mic on?
Yes.
Red button. So our mics are on. Hopefully those of you that are joining us via Zoom can hear us all right. If there's a problem with the audio, please let us know by sending a text message or a.
The chat.
Right call.
Chat.
Chat. Online. And that way we will know that we have a problem, but I think we have it fixed. It has been working. Which is good. Let me introduce the other officials that are here to receive usually the benefit of the public. Holly is Matty. Holly is standing up front here. Holly is president of Crossroads Community Planning, and she is the consultant that has been working with the Strategic Planning Committee. Excuse me, the Strategic Planning Committee has been working to draft multiple new overlay districts for consideration by the trustees. And we have adopted two new ones, and they are in effect. And we're looking now at a third one tonight. This one is Article 35 County Line Road Overlay. As an introduction. And then we have some members of the Strategic Planning Committee who are here. I think Bruce McFerrin in that. Steve Eisenbrow, Jim Steele. Anyone else that I missed? Oh, I didn't see you back there, Molly. That's the other Molly. Okay. Tonight, we will be conducting a hearing on HTVC 2307, which is to propose Article 35 County Line Road Overlay. And I know that Strategic Planning sent out an email to anyone that they had on their email list. And Tom, I'll let you comment just briefly on that because I want, we've got a couple more minutes before the scheduled start time for the hearing. How many of those were sent out? Molly.
Four hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, Molly, okay. On your email list. All right, good. And just to give us some notion about that, how many of you who are present here tonight, you see that email from Strategic Planning? Good. Very good. Glad to see that. The information is, we want to make sure that it gets out there and it's available. That's why they're utilizing the email list.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom. And if you're not on our email list yet, Molly's in the back.
Yeah, there's multiple ways to get added. Send an email to SPCG with the subject described and include your email address and your mailing address as your household address, if you live in Harlem Township. That way I can associate it with a residence. Or you can go to the SPC 30th Committee page on the Harlem Township website. And there's a form you could fill out there to also.
All right. Thank you, Holly. Okay, it's seven thirty-five. So at that time then, I'd like to recess our meeting specially, and we will open the hearing. With that, DG, would you again call the roll for the zoning commission members?
All right. Mike Kavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson. Here's Virginia Lewis. Here. Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Okay. Let me just briefly review our procedure that we're going to follow tonight during the hearing. What I would like to do is just give you a general idea of the expectations that we will have for public participation and overall how the meeting will go. The public will have the opportunity to comment and in order to ask questions. And during this time, I would ask if you observe the following procedures, please. Please, do you please step up to the podium if you wish to speak during the public comment session? And at that time, leave your name and address so that the secretary can record that. Would you be brief and be factual? Please not bring up a point or a question previously, but in our ad. Remember, only one person can be heard at a time, so do not carry on your own conversation while any of you are speaking. Because if a group wishes to speak, please have a spokesperson for the group to ask the permission. As each person comes to the podium, you will time the person that's there, and we will expect each person to take no more than three minutes in terms of addressing the group tonight. We have a large crowd, and there may be a lot of you who wish to comment. This way, we give everyone the opportunity to do that. Okay. Now, after we, when we open the hearing, the commission members will discuss. And we will have information shared with us by Holly about the new article. And when there are no further questions or comments, at that time, then we will begin to open it up to the public. And the public will then have the opportunity, as I've already described, during the public portion of the hearing. And then when I close, public portion of the hearing, there will be no further public comment or questions to be entertained this evening. After that, commission members will have the opportunity to make any additional comments in our presence and ask any more additional questions. We anticipate that the expectation for us is that we will not complete the whole process tonight. We want to receive the feedback from Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. So we were, are planning to recess this hearing to September the fifth, at which time then we will meet the meeting and continue the process. No decision will be reached tonight. It won't come until we do have that feedback from Regional Planning and have our discussion on September the fifth. But there will be discussion tonight, and then the public participation will be there at both times. Okay. With that, DG, would you read the public, for the public, the public notice that was printed in the Delaware Gazette, and we have it posted online?
All right. The Harlem Township Zoning Commission is being asked to consider the following. Harlem Township Zoning Resolution Amendment Application HTVC 2307, Proposed Article 35 County Line Road Overlay. The hearing is scheduled for August twenty-eighth at seven thirty-five at the Harlem Township Building. Three eight eight three South State Road, Route 605, Goena, Ohio. Four three zero two one. To view the application accompanying documents, please call seven four zero nine six five two six six one, extension two, Monday through Friday, eight twelve P M. To schedule an appointment or view on our website, harlem township dot com. The hearing is open to the public. The hearing is also available on Zoom. To join our hearing on Zoom, use the following link. And that is posted by Mike Kavler, Chair, August twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you. Okay. With that, let's move forward, and I will ask Ms. Matty. I've had them saying. If she would kind of give us a quick overview so that for the public, if they have an idea of getting online and you do it, they'll get an understanding of what it is that we're focusing on here tonight before we get into going to involve the community.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is, like you mentioned, Chairman, the third overlay district that this commission is reviewing, two of which have been adopted and are now in effect. This third overlay district encompasses the area along County Line Road and in between Green Cook Road and County Line Road. Turn us around here so you can see it a little bit better. It's on the screen over here for those of you that can't see the screen. Just south of Centerville Road is the Green Subarea, which is a mixed-use area, very, very similar, ninety-nine percent the same as the mixed-use area that has been approved along Fancher Road and actually abuts the green area. As you move forward, you move into Subarea B. That is a slight step on a higher height, building height. It goes from a thirty-five foot height to a forty-five foot height and allows for some contractor offices and those types of uses. And then as you get into the San and Keller, which is north of Montgomery Road, going all the way up to the North Fancher Line. That is the industrial advanced manufacturing area that the township is focusing on along that thirty-seven corridor, County Line Road, and would include clean industrial uses, advanced manufacturing, biotechnology, agro-technology, those sorts of uses. Does allow us to see part height in buildings and larger buildings than what is allowed in the mixed-use areas to the south. This area has been brought to our attention as we have seen the focus of County Line Road become a direct route from Impal over to Seventy-One. We're hearing that it's going to be a route that's really focused. The Delaware County Engineers Office is focusing safety applications on the improvement of that road. Thirty-seven is already a highly traveled road. We're getting over to Seventy-One. And the Harlem Township Comprehensive Plan, not the quick shot of you guys, but the Comprehensive Plan does show that thirty-seven corridor as being developed with business industrial uses. So we're in line with that going forward. Let's go back to the tests. What I really want to point out is that a lot of the development standards themselves are the same as what has already been approved by, I'm talking and not doing it right. By the township. So parking, signage, all of those different development standards are the same as the other overlay districts in effect. The setbacks, the two hundred foot setbacks along the main roadways, that is maintained within this overlay as well. The only thing I will say is that in the industrial area, we push the industrial uses closer to County Line Road. So County Line Road actually has a hundred foot setback. And the two hundred foot setback is at the rear of those lots to buffer it from the residential uses. And then those other roads like Green Cook and those internal roads, they have a two hundred foot buffer along them. So everybody thought moving it towards County Line Road made more sense. As for uses, this use table shows what is allowed in all of the different use and all the different subareas. So as you can see, the advanced manufacturing being allowed in B and C. B being that forty-five foot height building, C being the sixty foot high building. Biotechnology, the commercial recreational uses. And then data processing centers. We do allow daycare within these areas because that's one of the things that we are seeing a trend in is that we need to have daycare places where people can drop their children and they are working. So the workforce is really demanding those daycares within those areas. We do allow some residential throughout these areas in order to create a mixed-use scenario. We allow equipment repair, the larger being in the advanced manufacturing or the subareas. B and C, the small only being allowed in the area B, not in C. So keeping the large ones more towards the north. Allows flex office laboratories, flex office retail, and flex office warehousing. And what that means is that those are larger buildings with the flexible walls that's built within so they can be like designed to build, custom build to whatever tenants they may have. Healthcare facilities are allowed in here. Again, we are seeing a need for healthcare facilities in general in central Ohio and being able to push them to these commercial areas makes a lot of sense for this area. Landscaping and hard state businesses, we've maintained that within the middle area. And so not the larger buildings and not the mixed-use that goes toward Fancher, but that middle B area. Logistics, which is more of your warehousing type uses, again, being kept in the industrial areas to the north. Manufacturing as well. Schools are allowed, technical schools are allowed in all three subareas. Really thinking that these areas might be a place where we can have some on-the-hand, on-hand, on-the-job training, hands-on training within those industrial areas. We did keep the smaller schools or earlier education schools out of the industrial area and focus those on the mixed-use area. And then solar and wind energy are only allowed when they are accessory to a primary use. So not having the huge power field out there, although if they are fifty milliwatts or larger, the township cannot control those, those states. Fighting board. I do want to say while I'm on the uses that there was a thought to have some more definitions, define terms for each of these uses. So I want to enter into the record what is the document called definition to be discussed with the zoning commission, eight twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. You should all have a copy of it at your desk. What I would like to do is enter that in and make it section thirty-five point zero eight to this overlay district. That is the last section of the overlay district. And it will apply only to this overlay district. It will not apply to the overall zoning code. But it does describe specific uses that are in this overlay district. So what is it, advanced manufacturing? What is agricultural technology? What is biotechnology? So that is at your desk to review as well. And again, the intent is not to move forward with this tonight, so you will have some time to review those and provide feedback to us as well. So I have a question before we keep going. Are we going to do this sort of how we've done things in the past where we go through page by page? And if we have questions coming?
What I'm going to suggest is that we can go through it page by page in the sense of if you have a question on a given page, we can address that. As Holly pointed out, if you have viewed it and made a comparison, I went through comparing it to the mixed-use that we've already approved. There's very little difference.
Yes, I did have a few things.
That's what we will do for the commission.
Yeah, I was just trying to point out the things that are different from the other overlays so that we aren't spending time on the things that are already approved because we've already approved those and we don't want to be like taking, going back on that.
I mentioned to Holly before we started. I was going through and I saw something, I thought, oh, maybe I want to change that. Then I compared it to what we already approved, and I thought, no, I'm not going to make the change. It needs to match what we've already.
Yeah. But it doesn't need to match. Everything in here does not need to match what we've already.
If you make, if you make a change in here, then why, if it's just a wording kind of thing, this is what I'm thinking about. Why would we want to word it differently here than, you know, the document? Isn't it the same?
I was thinking it's more substantial than just wording.
Well, if there's nothing, I'm not disagreeing with that statement. I'm just saying that there's no point in going through and looking at what I can see as being the minutia of some of the individual wording and make a change in wording unless it is, you know, substance of substance that needs to be changed. And in that case, if it does match, maybe it does need to be different. And I think they go, I know that there was something clearly that showed up with it. And as she's always stated, anything dealing with industrial and everything.
And that's why I wanted to point out in sewage disposal, we have specific language regarding central water and sewer services. And then if they're not available, what happens in those particular cases? That is not in the other two districts, so I just wanted to point that out as well. And then as we get down after that, starting after that, almost everything is the same except for that setback that I quoted about the two hundred versus the one hundred. But once, like everything else is the same. So I was really almost at my end of my presentation at that point anyway. So I, at this point, I'll kind of back over to you.
Okay, sure. Nothing else you want to add?
No, really, that was my last thing. I was going to say, everything else is the same.
Okay, very good. So then I think what we can do, we can begin that process of going through for the commission members. We can look and ask any questions if they may have at this point. And then we will make sure that we provide the opportunity for the public. So with that said, let's start on page one. Purpose and so, I didn't really change.
So thirty-five point oh-one I, I thought we had changed this in the other ones. I did not pull them upside by side. But allow us preparing the vet name and settlement and other tools to prevent annexation. I thought we had changed prevent to discourage or something. Yeah, we'll make that change.
Because of, just like what you mentioned, the version of the earlier stuff that we already approved, we don't have the final one that was approved by the county. And I would like to have that.
Should be online. If then you're.
Well, you can have it on, I'm not saying, but I'm just telling you that it is there. It's on online. Okay.
DG, is that something we can ask for you to do? Print up copies of the new overlay districts that have been added and get them free hole punches so we can add them to our?
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you.
DG, that would be four set. There's four different articles that have been added, and that has been approved. So all four of those, three, one, two, three, and four. Should be brought off with the free hole punching. And then it can be distributed to, if you can do that, you can have, they can all have them before the next meeting.
Yeah, send me an email about it and I'll make sure to do it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Go ahead. Coming back to where we were on the, if you don't have a, well, you've got a hard job. We probably pretty much didn't resolve it. This is the new rule. I mean, I'm sorry, this is the current rule that we're working on, right? They're not, they're not looking at a top paper company if one wants to go.
No.
Okay. All right, back to thirty-five oh-one. She's already asked that question about.
And I can't remember the exact word.
Changing that, but it might be something that downloads. If it didn't get changed, then maybe it's. I'll pull it up on my computer so that we have.
Remember asking about it previously, so I feel confident that we, that we talked about it.
Okay. Anything else on page one?
Yeah, I'd like to have the, the actual roads that are the boundaries included in that area section. That section, there's a Bible to do.
You want to disguise them in words?
Yeah, it should also be on the map, though.
Definitely want that. And then the lines. In some instances, the black line, it is a road. But in other instances, I'm not sure it's a road. So anything that is there that is a road, that's a dividing line, we definitely want to get that labeled. At the bottom, the last road down there that I think were the green stops, that's Evan's road. Doesn't go all the way across.
Correct. It doesn't go all the way across. Right.
That, but that's Evan. Yeah, I had the same comment as well on my end. That was something I think we, because we need to make sure that it's clear to the public what areas you're doing.
And it's quite possible. I mean, right now I can see why you would think that, well, we can look at the property boundaries and stuff like that and figure out where it is. But those property boundaries will change.
I understand. I, I get it.
After the marking was sticked that we can, I could get the word.
I have it now. Yeah, we'll get it done.
Okay. That, that really takes us to page three. Let's, you know, the prominent. Comment, uh, agree. In perspective, the overlay estimate is thirty-five oh-three and thirty-five oh-four committed and exempted uses. And then Holly has already pointed out some of the differences here for the public. There's a lot longer leash of potential uses for this.
Following that list of uses, the schools, I know you had talked about the earlier schools regulating those. Do we really have that control to say to a district, say, we don't want to build a school there? So technically, if they push it, they probably could move forward with it. But most schools do try to locate in areas that are them or and play with as unusual. But technically, yeah, they could just. So since they technically can, does that put us in a legal bind if we say that? And then somebody else for some unrelated thing tries to say, oh, this is garbage because you can't do that? No, because they're a public entity. They're a public. Yeah, they're political subjects. Okay. I also had a question about restaurants with auto-oriented uses because then down under prohibited uses H. So you have that up in your list as allowed in certain areas, but then down under H, it has automobile-oriented uses shall be prohibited. Oh, without, yeah. But yeah. There you go. Never mind. You get? Yeah, okay.
And all these things are now in the, because this definition.
Yeah, except for automobile oriented and pickup. They're at the end of your thirty-five. Yeah, because they're in existing Article Four, so we're amending existing Article Four.
I was just going to ask about that as well. If I looked in this, they definitely would give a warning.
We're wanting to amend it. The Strategic Planning Committee talked significantly about amending those two definitions to read the way they read now in this proposed document. Yeah, and they want it that way for all the subareas.
Because that will apply across boards.
Correct. That's why it's in Article Four. Correct.
But these other definitions are only going to apply to Article thirty-five.
Correct, yeah. So down under prohibited uses G, you also have no outside storage. I was wondering, is that even for landscaping? Are they going to be required to store mold piles or plants that they may have inside? Is that your question? I mean, as written, it would. So if that's something that you guys want changed, we could discuss that. I just have, I know, and I know mold piles can cut fire outside, so I have no idea what the safety ramifications are if they're inside.
I'm not sure. I see the point in storing gravel inside.
Yeah, I mean, I don't love the look of the pile outside, but I, yeah, I think, I think it's going to sort of discourage those landscaping. I think in this district, I think you could, and I wouldn't want it for the other two districts. This would be an area where it would differ, different than the other two. But for this one, allowing that limited outside storage and then having it screened to one foot higher than whatever it is they're storing. Okay, so do we take that out of prohibited uses then, or do we just? I think we do, and I think we address it where we. I think we do, and I think we address it where we talk about, um, like trash receptacles, and we talk about like mechanicals, we just throw the outside storage in there with the one foot above.
Okay, so we're going to delete G as it is. And then we're going to write that we will only be looking at, uh, follow up.
And then go print change your letter. Which I'm sure there will be a lot of.
You don't know kind of where that comes from.
Um, it would be.
Yeah, we're, I was gonna say, thank you, Tom.
It would be then thirty-five point oh seven, um, R, um, twelve. So it will probably end up being, um, off the end, somewhere at the end of page twenty, beginning of page twenty-one.
Uh, it'll become a part, a front part as well, is that what you?
Yeah, so it's both B is where we talk about, so there's serious production areas, so we'll go in there.
Storage areas, though.
Yeah, yeah.
We add, um, when we do, we'll modify some of that.
Modify what's there, yeah.
That's under, uh, twelve B. Uh, we'll be looking under that area.
Yep.
Okay. Um, do I shoot?
Yes. I have, but yeah, the rest of that's probably the next thing I'd like to add, a few more things within the division. After the no larger retail, I'd like, um, no cement asphalt or similar class subway containers. Because of all the discussion I've been hearing, random, it sounds horrible. Um, also, I'm not sure if you addressed it, anything else, but I'd like no overnight truck loading, unloading, or engine running. So like truck engines riding all night are not conducive to your residence.
And you said it, the term is with no overnight truck loading, unloading for, for engine run.
Yeah, I don't know what, it's probably, that's some sort of technical term for the engine running, but I don't know what it is.
Idling.
Idling?
Yeah.
Okay, and then idling? I'd like to ask, thank you. And it also like has no gun hearing is allowed.
You can just step that with the truck speed.
That's another thing that doesn't seem to me to fit well in this areas I have residents nearby.
And you could get from that, uh, no gun being used in both, is, uh, indoor is all outdoors? Or are you thinking, you're going to do that out there?
Well, I was thinking outdoors, but I don't, I don't know how much noise comes off from indoor.
I just know you, there's several, one.
Yeah, well, I was, this also, I was, for all these things, I was thinking about the outdoor side, but I don't know, everybody else on this mission has a, anything in one way or another about any of these things that I would rather not see there.
What about the, uh, is that ever something discussed by the, uh, strategic planning committee in terms of, uh, you had noise that could knock it on the corner?
None of those were brought up.
I'm okay with all of those suggestions, I think those are valid to bring up.
Yeah, I had, uh, I only thought of two of them, asphalt and cement plants, but I probably go.
Yeah.
The, uh, the truck idling, you allow logistics. Um, there may be no way around that.
Well, the idling.
But we might be able to stay within certain distance of a residential unit.
Yeah, or, uh, are you thinking, Tom, that it's, it's a requirement for them to idle all night?
They load and unload during the night because they run twenty-four seven.
But even if not, even if it's waiting to load or unload, that engine's gotta be idling, that's, uh, that's their house on wheels, so the heat or cooling.
Not if the, if they're the, uh, outlet, that is why maybe they'll provide along, along the freeways with trucks, so that they don't sit there at night. As well, in this area.
Public comment from Todd Dwell on Zoom, um, refrigerated trucks must run at all times.
We don't want them there then.
I don't know that you can pick and choose if you're doing something like, this is a big one, but like even Amazon, they have refrigerated trucks as well, because they do their like two hour grocery service.
I think the best thing is to put a distance.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I agree.
There would, there would be some element of control, whereas right now, that's not there.
And if we could put something in about, you know, where it's an option, adding plug-in stations so that you don't have to idle. I mean, that would certainly be nice, but.
Yeah.
All right, I got a list.
Got it? All right, um, thirty-five oh six, so we have.
Yeah.
That just brings back to, um, the procedures that are already in the three, thirty-five oh seven.
You might want to get rid of that, that's probably, I think you don't use the, so you don't.
In thirty-five oh seven, I did have a question about road widening, and this actually goes back to all the overlay districts, so it may be too late, but it didn't pop into my head until this time. So hypothetically, we've created these areas that we want these buffers for, but we have no control over O dot. So O dot comes and says, we're gonna widen thirty-six, thirty-seven, and that's gonna take away part of your buffer.
No, it won't, the way we've written it.
Okay.
So we've written it so that it is from the proposed right-of-way line, and then we've defined what a proposed right-of-way line is, and we've made it larger for the O dot right-of-ways. So that there's a seventy-five foot from center line for a total of one hundred and fifty foot right-of-way for the O dot roads. And you don't mark, you don't start your setback until you reach that, um, right-of-way line. And that's in all the.
Okay.
All these roads have been widened.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we established, you, so the state routes and the Lurder roads are seventy-five foot from center line. And then in this particular case, the, the Needle Road, Montgomery Road, and Greenza Road are fifty foot from center line, and then all other local roads are thirty foot from the. Trenton Road is, um, I know, upward state route thirty-seven, thirty-five foot.
On page seven, when I compared, um, sub item nine, protect natural. And what we have, you got some new land.
I'm sorry, which, which one are you on?
I'm not, not saying I don't like the line.
This, the riparian wetland thing, we added that, didn't we? That was added in the other ones later. Nine?
Page seven, item number, sub item number nine. It wasn't in the, uh, copy I looked at online, so what's online is what, uh, was provided, um, in the original planning, they posted it.
We will use the ordinary high water line on the ones that were to.
Not yet. I want to ask about it, because I, I recall the discussion about that, right?
Yeah.
Forward of that. My reference, I changed, the trustee's changed a couple of things, so.
Yeah, please, uh, what I do, uh, got to change in ten, but to make sure then that the copy that was forwarded or posted by original planning was in fact the correct copy.
Yeah.
We're not gonna go back and change something, we can't do that, but if they errantly posted the wrong one, it can be corrected.
Right, we will look into that.
Thank you. Um, okay. Going forward. Anything, buddy? Nine.
Uh, one three nine, Molly. In the, uh, with the, you see a lot of over the street people. Ahead in, number of three trucks, one hundred and one foot. One thing on the page ten.
Didn't want to.
Uh, on page nine, is the, um,
The number is spelled out in.
There's a number of, they don't eat, they're pretty, they're, then on the back, on page ten, the thing. The word.
Well, no, actually, we, we had a text to them.
I had the text.
There's a screen coming, it's sitting behind you, it hasn't been installed yet, and we wish that map were there, but for the public who can't see this, what we're looking at very well, we, we are working on the technology to not install it.
And what, what we are looking at is available online. So you can see it on your computer at home, if you brought your laptop with you, you'll all be announced. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the big DVD, they're standing back there, so.
We're getting closer.
But we don't have it installed yet. Uh, page ten, we got the same thing, page eleven?
Page eleven, mine is just the formatting thing, if we can get M to go with the table at some point, that would be great, but we're still in the editing phase, so.
We're, we'll adjust that, yeah.
Same with, the table has the asterisks with it, if those could all be with the table, that'd be great.
It's, uh, page twelve.
I just had a question, so there, there are no mixed-use buildings allowed in areas B or C? I'm wondering whether there's a, not applicable under that one, because there's, that's how we can't add any mixed-use building.
Yeah, I mean, that's how we have it proposed, I mean, that can be discussed, but yes, that's how it's proposed.
Because the idea is they'll be heavier industrial uses in the whole one. Businesses are just in fact.
All right, page thirteen.
This is just for the design standards in general and things like parking. Do we have to specify that they have to meet like ADA requirements, or just do those requirements supersede us and so on, okay?
Well, I did just have a question about, um, at, at the top paragraph, we talked about no, uh, colored glass on a building, so you can have stained glass and dirt. Where are we?
I'm with fourteen, this is the area though where they could ask for a divergence and we allow a divergence for that, we don't just want to give that flat approval.
It's, uh, under O, O two three, one, the next one, two.
Yeah, I would agree that we would want to leave it how it is and ask for divergence if it's a church. Um, now, we can't, um.
Are you not allowing churches?
Yeah, we can't prohibit churches, churches, so, um, so they're, they fall under the places of assembly definition. So smaller ones and larger ones are regulated differently, um, so, uh, they are, I believe, this, only the smaller are in the southern area, and then both are allowed. And, um.
They assemble here.
Yeah, correct.
I think that my work always meant what I was talking about.
Yeah. We're allowing them permitted, the large ones permitted only in sub-area B. There are allowed to be accessory and C. So most likely, a church is not going to come in C, because it can't be, a place of assembly has to be accessory to a permitted use. So if you have, um, a hotel and you want a conference center with it, that would be permitted because it's accessories in a hotel. But most likely.
Normal answer is.
Um, no. Oh, in C, yeah, so, but that's, again, churches could still rezome and go in that area, but they're not incentivized with the.
Moving forward, fourteen.
Fifteen. Uh, the only thing I have on fifteen is under, uh, E. Where you got the radiation, E I F S. I haven't looked that.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's not well, basically, but it's a brand, it is a, a terminology.
I just want to throw it out.
Yep. Why do you have free test concrete place in that number two? Yeah, we have that one alone, or did it mean something?
No.
Are those things that we didn't question in the previous, so the industrial? Okay, so this is, um, all mail.
So do we have industrial uses defined in this specific definition?
You have different types of industrial uses, so advanced manufacturing, agricultural technology, biotechnology, um, less warehouses would just, those would all fall under, manufacturing would all fall under the industrial classification.
So we somehow, yeah, note that only definition, which one's a, where's?
Molly makes a good point, so we'll just, where it says key building designs for industrial uses, just take out the word for industrial uses, because it says following building design standards shall apply to all new buildings in sub-area C. So it doesn't matter what you, whether you're industrial or not, it's sub-area C.
Next, Jane? Next, Jane.
I had a question about the exemptions under lighting. Lighting fixtures losing light directly by combustion or possible doing. Do we still have that word lighting?
It's usually down from the state, from, it's more than that, they don't have to say.
That's language, that's on the other, like.
You, you rarely see things like, there's some winters and gas.
But if somebody tried one, we would not allow it.
Well, actually, we would apparently, because these are in depth.
Oh, alright, okay.
So maybe, maybe we don't want to.
Mary, you put a comment on that?
I'm, I'm fine with them saying this an exemption, especially if they are in other related categories, I agree with Mike, they are generally more aesthetically pleasing. Less light pollution.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you have one in yellow. Yeah, well, I was in the other.
Yeah, I just wanted to show what their, their exempt from, whether they're exempt from having to be down lighting or?
Yeah, and the, the humans and everything.
They couldn't be a lot brighter than what we're allowing elsewhere.
I was gonna say, I haven't seen any like. Fire burning really bright enough to be as bad as some of the signs, or like the lights that were down on. Six oh five for a while, I don't, I don't think I'm actually thinking about fire and.
All right, seventeen. No, the quibble, um, page seventeen, uh, three, eight. We got, um. In which case the light shall be reduced by fifteen percent.
Hey, forget this, Nick, it means that we've gotten good, and then other things to catch, so we have to catch a little of them. Yeah, speaking of, now that we're talking about this, page nineteen, number eleven, we have two inch just as the number two. Sorry, I skipped around to different, page nineteen.
Well, there's a lot of numbers and stuff on this next one. Some go all over that.
There is, there is a fifty percent, seventy percent, but they're still out.
Well, I picked it up at all, because you pointed out one of them.
It's page nineteen, number eleven. Parking island landscaping, it says a minimum of two-inch caliper, but two inches is not spelled out.
So, yeah, V, V, uh, I, the, the five.
Yes, I saw that, I got that one.
And then this is where that piece about landscaping, so we're just getting at it, right?
I just want to clarify the page here, then, uh, under A I A, E I A, uh, and then on the six foot wall, on mound. So the mound, we said.
Correct, yes.
I was wanting to make sure, and then the landscaping materials would be known, potentially on top of that.
Yes, correct.
I thought, and I know this is residential, but I know, like, in our conservation district, we've tried to say we don't want the mounds.
Correct, correct, and we did do that, this is, this is an area where we added a mound in this.
Specifically because it's going to be, so, okay, yep. We got more of those coming up, the twenty-one, too.
You can do that.
Any sample here?
You can, you can do the odds. Okay, John, twenty-one?
Three, three lines up from the bottom, stop by existing trees. Trees and other significant natural resources should be preserved, um, when determining those places, and, uh, and historical after natural.
I just have a general question, Dr. Reddick, uh, Mr. Roger, King, don't worry, it's, the question being, this particular requirement. Uh, are you aware of buildings that are actually in Portland?
Yeah, Berlin Park.
Berlin Park, okay, there's a, I asked because the thought might not be.
Yeah, I don't know if one's actually constructed, but they are in the process of, um, getting stuff in Berlin Park, and it's subject to their similar.
Uh, page twenty-two.
Is there any chance that under, um, F, the parking, if it can be constructed to minimize visual and audible in that?
That's going to be different than the other districts, so, but I guess if you want to make the argument that this is industrial, and you want to add that for that purpose.
My question with that is, we've always been told, told we can't really do like noise and stuff, because nobody's going to enforce it. So I feel like if you have a visual buffer that is going to be made of trees and plants, then it will. Have an impact on, on what you're hearing through there, I'm not saying it's a perfect solution. But barring putting up some ugly sound barrier wall, I'm not sure how much more you can do. Than what you're already doing with the plank.
I would agree with that, and really enforcing the audio stuff is very difficult.
Yeah.
It's something we've been a lot of complaints, um. In the past, it's something that people have complained about.
And, and, and I would say, if, if noise becomes an issue, and the township has a noise order, then you deal with it, and if the township doesn't have a noise order. Then they don't want to.
No changes before?
Correct.
All right, royal, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, there are several things in the table that have numbers, has numbers and not as words.
Now, I'm also curious, does the maximum number of required parking spaces, is that different from the maximum number of allowed parking spaces?
It, they cannot exceed the maximum number of parking spaces. So if they want to go above that number, they would have to ask for a divergence. To do that, and the whole reason is you don't want to see a parking everywhere.
I, I'm just curious of, of why you didn't use allowed instead of required in that.
Because. It's still a required number, yeah, but it's still a required number, it's still required to give you. A number of parking spaces, so that's the maximum number that they can give.
So I don't think we're to this point yet, but let's say hypothetically, business gets really big, and there's some big industrial thing out here who wants to put a big parking structure underground. Is that something that they just come and ask for a divergence, or because it's not seen?
No, there's no part of that.
Okay, I was only just told you that, um. Is he identifying, is, um, how about twenty-four?
Same thing, but I imagine you'll take a look at the whole table.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-five. Six.
I think, um, under, when they play this, one A, um, third one. Eighty percent of the sign, what, when? Put in there the same sign and show there that they will be.
Oh, yeah.
And that doesn't have the percent in the number, it only has the number, whereas the other ones. We're getting really nitpicky on this now.
Well, you know, some of it just. Uh, twenty-seven?
Yeah. This figure seems to be put on top of another four, because I can't read anything for number four.
Oh, we'll do that, yeah, that just got bumped.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get that, number four, third.
It just says ground mounted signs are permitted, but, um, based on the following requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
And then that table too, the number.
Yeah, that's probably the figure went in and covered up.
It, uh, it just got bumped.
Okay, twenty-eight? Okay, twenty-nine? What is this probability that there will be proof? It, it's not a big issue, I just.
Yeah, because the industrial buildings tend to have the awning over their entrances to their buildings. But that's why I did change that in this one.
Okay.
On purpose.
All right. That's, I mean, I was asking to change this, we were, but, uh, that was the intent. Uh, page thirty. It's a point of clarification from me on the item, um, C, four. Um. From parcels that are grounded five acres, such signs may be displayed for up to one hundred eighty days, made of concrete, enjoying first control. Will take them up under eighty days, no other extension period is straight away to. They must be approved by the board signing a P. And the next sentence, in no case, they'll set signs be written for more than three hundred and sixty-five days. So, does that?
Five, that's pretty, you play.
Well, um, I'm, no, the question then is, yeah, the five days is a factor, but is it a hundred and eight? Three hundred and sixty plus three hundred and sixty-five?
No, um, we should, I, I believe what happened is we had ninety and ninety, and then three sixty-five, and somehow we got changed to one eighty, one eighty, and the three sixty-five that we get things.
Okay.
So I say we strike the, in no case, but, so, but, I just, the whole other.
As I read through, that was my.
We're just, we'll just strike the no other extensions.
Okay.
Part.
So they won't go to more than.
Correct, yep.
It goes, that's two cents. Yeah, no other. In no case, those signs be written for more than three hundred and sixty days. Are you reading that sentence, or are you gonna?
I was just gonna strike everything, so, yeah, strike the last two sentences.
I don't think we need that sentence, right?
Correct.
Very good. All right, anything else on three, if not thirty-one?
I did have a question in the pickup or banking window, but those definitions are now different, so I think that doesn't matter. Is that correct, that they are different?
They are different, and that was approved, so if you get approved, they'll replace what's approved in your current.
So these will not actually be printed in our, these, these two definitions.
So these only exist on this draft, and I can just get rid of them in there.
They'll be in article.
They'll be in article four, they, they're, they're still part of this amendment.
Okay, so if they're in article four, then my question, I guess, is still valid. In pickup or banking window, the last sentence, food orders and prescriptions are typically placed ahead of time online via the web or mobile device. And these windows are not utilized for placing and waiting for orders on site. The typically, and then are not utilized, seem to, we can say typically not utilized.
I would add typically, I would say typically placed and then typically not utilized.
Okay, so then, yeah, it just seems that one allows for some leanings, and the other doesn't.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, well, I, you got that.
Yeah, well, we don't want to be witchy, boy.
So those, those two definitions will be changed in article four, but these other listed definitions, these not going in article four?
No, they're gonna go in the actual overlay at start, because you don't, they're not applying across the board to all the districts.
And they were not submitted as part of the original. The original article, and therefore not submitted as part of the article that one is considering. Uh, and potential amendments to the definition, so that's why they're being added, they'll be added enough. But only to article thirty-five. And according to, uh, legal challenges that.
So none of the things in this new review are actually defined in article four at all?
I have not done a complete comparison, I think solar, I think solar is. But I, I would say that you want the solar that we have here in the overlay. Because it implies that the higher nice thing. We will compare.
It is different, I can hear it.
Is there a reason we don't want to update the article four one to match this?
Well, we can update the.
You can do it later, this can't do it now, then.
Just can't do it now, because we did not publicize that, we not put out public news about it. Of this document, the only two items that were included were the two that you commented about, and one of. But these two can be added to the definition. And I think we will eventually be doing some things with definitions, because we do an revision for all, potentially we can add them.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to the end. And then let's move on. Question, I thought, I'm trying to do that.
Let me have one, one on definitions under logistics.
Are you reading one? Okay, because we had a look at those, I was going to open it up to the public before we went through the definition.
That is the only one I've got.
Only one, okay. What page, Tom, which word?
Under logistics. So the second sentence, there is no, uh, there is no production processing, assembly, or packaging of products and materials in the book. Um, and in my experience, there is occasionally minimal production processing, but re-labeling, boxing. Breaking down pallets, it's all under handling that would not be allowed under that definition. Instead of the word no, I just change it to minimal.
So you're gonna say only minimal?
There is minimal production, yeah. And, and how are they wanting us to talk about that?
Yeah, uh, Tom had called me about it, and I said I wanted to talk about it as a group during the public hearing versus if it's. A one-on-one discussion.
Well, it's inconsistent with, um, what every intent was from, from those committee.
You know, do they express?
Yeah, I would say that.
Yeah, I would say though, that I think you're probably right, that you can't really have a logistics operation without occasionally having to break open a pallet to send things different ways. And, so I, I agree, but.
Yeah.
I, I.
I, I think that that would potentially have to be, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would think it would.
Could be limited to this, only minimal.
So, yeah, yeah, so I'm fine with minimal, yeah. And I think, I can't speak for the strategic planning committee, but I would say that that would not be a huge deal with them. And when we go to the trustees, from the planning commission, we'll be highlighting what's different. From how it was presented from the strategic planning committee to how it's been came out of the planning commission, so that'll be highlighted as. Yeah.
If, if the wording, we say there is versus there may be, or versus only minimal, there's a difference to me in terms of what that says.
I'm fine with there may be.
That's true.
Yeah.
There may be. So, we're saying it's permitted, so we're not trying to. Okay. Uh, with that said, what I would like to do is uh, open a public comment at this point. And see if any members of the public that have a, a question or a comment, and if you do, please come to the podium with your name. Uh, then your address, and then um, make your comment or ask your question. You wanna sit down and use that mic or what?
No, I'm fine, I'm still stiff from sitting. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Uh, Dutch Holland, seventy-one hundred Harlem Road, West, Westerville. I have two quick questions based upon some of the discussion. We talked about the road offsets allowing for ODOT. I have a question about Fancher and Harlem. Is there anything planned to put a roundabout in there, I mean, uh, I live just south of the intersection. And some people must think that it's really a speedway and you're allowed to go a hundred down that road. And they come to that blind corner and they zip around that corner and they don't see me or my neighbor pulling out after we've looked.
It's the same on the other side of that corner, I'll, I'll assure you, and then do it on my side of Fancher too.
So, is there any, or is that not in the? Not in the purview of what we're talking about?
Um, well, it's something that has to do with the uh, potentially strategic planning committee if there's, when they're looking at infrastructure, I don't know whether there's been any. Thoughts uh, here regarding that or not. Uh, if there's been any discussion, if there is, there's some members of, you know, the strategic planning committee who are here, Holly, are you aware of it?
Those, those discussions um, during the strategic planning committee regarding that.
I was in motion on ODOT's website about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's like a big rut in the road so that if they come down at that speed, they brought them out and, you know.
I can tell you, from personal experience, when I requested that on um, Miller Paul Road. From the county engineer, he said, no, we're not into the business of putting things in that would slow traffic down. That was his answer.
Hey, you at least have the roundabout on the other end, so they can't build up as much speed before they get to that Fancher corner, once they're past Fancher on my side, it's. Pedal to the metal.
Yeah, it's uh, they. The trustees really have very little uh, ability to deal with that. Comes out of the uh, county, county office and then the state of Ohio. We've learned that it's the state of Ohio that sets speed limits on all our roads.
My thoughts is if things start or when things start going in on Fancher to make it more mixed use, I wouldn't be shocked if they turn it into. A three-way stop or a traffic light or something. I, I don't think currently there's the space to do a roundabout there, all the houses are just too close and I have no idea what the eminent domain. Policies are on taking those houses out, but my thought would that, would be that they would eventually do something there to slow things down, but I don't think we've heard anything yet.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that until, rather than waiting till there's a couple fatalities and then doing it.
That's what it took at six oh five in Fancher.
Because I'm sure that one of the fatalities is gonna be related to my family and I'd rather not. I like all my kids, I wanna.
Yes, sir, what was your second?
My second, sorry, my second question is, there's a comment about in the uh, industrial area, uh, no indoor gun range. I would, I guess I can't see the prohibit on that because they, they have the ability to soundproof the building. At indoor gun range, we've got several in, you know, in the, in what I think are mixed use areas now. I guess I don't see the need to prohibit that.
I think your comment was more in regards to outdoor gun ranges.
Yeah, it was, it was, but then it was talked about, or indoor.
Right, well, I asked that question because I wanted to uh, get the clarification on when we're together. Um, and that, that was my point, that if it's indoor, that would eliminate the noise issues perhaps that you just can hear about.
So, the only, the only one we're looking to put in there is outdoor, apparently.
To be prohibited.
Be prohibited.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put that in, have the wording that way, and no outdoor gun.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, man, please, watch the chords.
Looking on the chord here.
Like a big snake.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well. Yes, um, I'm Donna Farrell, and it's six one eight eight, State Route six oh five South, Westerville. And my question is, maybe not to you, but maybe do more to the strategic planning commission, and that is. Were there any consultations with um, Johnstown Monroe Township? Planning, uh, when this came about, when the map came about, and also any. Consultations with New Allman Company, although I don't think anybody knows what New Allman Company is going to do. Um, my reason for asking this question is um, a little birdie told me a rumor, and I underline rumor. That um, Johnstown Monroe is looking at the area. Uh, where there is now going to be main factory, allowed to go ahead and put some manufacturing in that area, just over the. The county line, not very far over the county line, and so my question is, was there any consultation or were, were you strictly looking at Delaware County planning? Uh, when some of these decisions were made, I was just surprised by where the manufacturing uh, was, is going to be allowed.
Yeah, there, I'm sure there were contacts and discussions that have occurred, and I'm gonna let Holly address that or any other member of the plan.
Yeah, so um, we have been in contact with neighboring communities, we obviously don't plan in a vacuum. Um, I am part of a lot of different meetings, so a lot of different agencies in and around the intel area, so I'm constantly. Um, hearing what's going on in and around the area, um, there are things that do go on that people don't know about, because non-disclosure agreements and those sorts of things, so obviously we don't know everything. Um, and we do keep our eye on uh, land acquisitions. So that we understand who is assembling land and what they typically have done in the past, when it's. That particular person that's acquiring land. Um, so, do we know exactly what's happening where and when? No, are we studying it and try to figure out the puzzle? Yeah.
Well, we do have people that are actively involved in that, the planning commission members are all gone huge. Holly and Molly are um, employees in the sense that they are hired by the trustee as consultants. So, they are, Molly and Holly are indeed attending a lot of different meetings, as you just described.
From my understanding though, Holly, you have said in the past that places like Trenton aren't really doing anything yet, so we've sort of. The, I think the township has been better at being more proactive on things and. And trying to get these regulations in place before somebody just comes in and buys everything up, because other townships that are very close. Yeah, Monroe Township uh, has not run a lottery planning, um, they have tried to do a um, we use plan on their own as trustee. We helped them out a little bit with some public survey stuff and that was about it. Um, and they just recently were announced a four hundred acre mixed-use development is coming in, in their township, annexing into Johnstown. Which, you know, if they would have been able to plan ahead of time, um, like you guys are doing, they may have been able to retain that within their township versus being annexed in their Johnstown. Um, Trenton Township um, is just now starting their planning process and we've got us to um, talk to them, um, so up until recently, you know, they hadn't been doing anything. But they're starting to see that the, they're, the next ring out, and they're starting to understand that. Thank you.
And I love you, totally.
Thank you for asking.
Yes. I don't wanna do that.
Thank you, that's a better way for you to go. Uh, any other members of the public with a question or a comment?
Um, Sean Frederick, one five zero six two Centerville Road, and I know this proposed um. Overlay is very popular with bicycle riders. Where there's times where there's a group of thirty or more going past, I was just wondering if there's any discussions about. Safety of the bicycle riders. And myself being one of them, so.
I can see bicycle on your shirt.
I didn't, yeah, intentionally, but, yeah, just something to consider.
So, yeah, so the actual existing roadways, um, the overlay is not going to have much. Um, say on how those existing roadways are expanded and how. Bicycle um, lanes integrated into them, making them truly multi-modal, that's beyond the purview of the township with those existing roads. Having said that, the overlay district does require multi-use paths within the developments. Um, so, even though you may ride on a road. Um, if they don't have the accommodations as this develops, that should be multi-use path. Thanks.
So, primarily the, the new development, not the existing. Other questions are coming?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Matt Jaeger, six six eight one Harlem Road. Um, I got a three questions, I'll try and narrow down to, first of them would be, uh, the permitted uses and um. In the per, per, permitted and prohibited uses, is there any, have we identified any industries or businesses that we would like to encourage to come in? Um, types of industry? And if so, could those be identified? Um, like, you know, asterisk on the list of something that we could be more soft to encouraging those types of to come in.
So.
Go ahead, Holly.
So, we have not specifically identified them at this point in time, I continue to walk, talk to uh, One Columbus. Um, and other um, economic development farms, um, I think that. The way to attract them more is through incentives, so incentivizing those particular uses once they're identified. Um. Is probably a better route than putting a star next to them on, considering overlay.
Um, and my other question was, for the Duncan Run watershed, in the tree section right there, south of Central College. Are we, are you working on that, for the protection of that, in that commercial area, so don't bulldoze all the trees down?
That, that, working on it, yes, so we've identified through the Duncan one, the Duncan Run watershed, that there are um. Uh, it's, it's been identified as one that I would use a language at risk based on contaminants that ultimately flow into Hoover reservoir, so. What we're looking at really is how can we do some things, like in the watershed and drainage as development occurs in that area. Uh, and then to see if there are ways to maybe get some funding, do some grants to identify where we might require more retention ponds. Control the water that moves off of it, and we, we think because it's been identified as a problem area that could be, be susceptible to that. But as developers come in, one of the first things we're talking with them about is what is their plan for the water?
Uh, thank you, and my last one, with all this industrial coming down county line, is there a way to encourage with the ADP power line planning coming in? Cause I assume industrial businesses and industries need a lot of power, that's not out there late yet. Is there a way to tie this in to encouraging the lines to follow some sort of route that follows industrial power?
There has been discussion with strategic planning already about trying to get them to follow. Existing property lines and things, so they can't take those big farm fields that could be developed in a sensible manner and cut right through the middle so that they can't be. But who knows if ADP's gonna let go?
I know there's a strategic plan is doing, making an effort, and I don't know Holly, who exactly is involved in doing it, trying to set up a, a con, a consultation. With uh, ADP, trying to get some. Discussion and input if we're, the society board, that ultimately makes the decision whether there's power lines or ADP.
Right, and, and I'll just add, we met with Consolidated Electric Cooperative, which has. Probably about a third of the township on the eastern side, which is roaming virtually the entire north-south region. Uh, sharing with them what we're hearing from developers, that we are looking at a potential overlay for some industrials, some light industrial. So that they can be planning and preparing for it, because in a lot of the sections that you see in this overlay, they would be consolidating electric cooperative areas, not in the.
Oh, okay.
But separately, we are working to try and uh, see what we can do to influence the high line piece with ADP in that project, that Boone Chapel project, maybe moving. High lines to the township uh, to the intel.
And, and Matt just, um, I looked on the ADP site um, this afternoon. Um, at the literature that had been posted earlier, there's a new version, and now they're very clearly talking about, we're looking at citing. Um, one corridor immediately, and we're looking at where we would put the second one. Okay, there's no doubt, there's gonna be two high-end power lines through the township, and they're probably not gonna run the power. They don't want them side by side. Thank you.
That's not good. Unless you get them placed in the right place. Well, at least we've begun the conversation, that, that part's good. Wait, any other uh, questions and comments to be posted? All right, with uh, that then, since you've done, we'll close the public forum.
No, 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 don't close the public hearing.
No, no, look, the public forum.
God, I'm sorry.
Your public comment.
Makes sense, sorry.
Well, I'll put a comment.
At the next. Sorry.
I wasn't going to close the hearing, no. Okay, uh, in fact, I wanted to even have the initial discussion about the definition in the center. You just received the, uh, and I'm not sure if the one that I, that I'm gonna ask you, Holly and Holly. Uh, the, I didn't send it to you, but I forwarded the copy to uh, electronically, to the hearing commission. That comment sent to me uh, Friday, was it Saturday? Anyway, well, I sent it to them, I think, on Saturday, and I was told, once I came in, that this copy doesn't match that one.
So, yeah, so there were um, a few little clerical things, nothing major.
Okay.
Um, that Molly went through and cleaned up today and emailed to Mike and kind of asked Mike to do it.
Okay, well, um, everyone's got heart, obviously, this one, and this then is the latest version, this would be the one that we should. Make ever to get posted now. Um, as part of, well, it's thirty-five oh eight. Except for the one changes.
That don't make that change. Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, you can make that change, but if we make the change, you should send a newer copy, Mike, till we get that.
Yeah, I, I haven't had, have not shared with, with the public, and at some point, I want to do that happen. The public has had access to this version, but the changes that we're talking about tonight, obviously. If they were here, they heard us talking about the, but they're all pretty minor. Well, at some point, um, if we can get those changes into a copy, then I can get that, that, that version maybe posted before we.
That's, that would be my suggestion, is that we make it, we actually incorporate this into thirty-five point oh eight. With these changes that you guys. Had tonight, get that to you, if you post that online, you're hearing.
Okay, and today is Monday, so Molly, how quickly you can do? Okay, and then today is Monday, so Molly, how quickly are you, you feeling to get this back?
Um, Holly, it's, it's wonderful.
Okay, that'd be great. That would allow us, and I think E J, uh, E D can get through the information and he, he can get it brought up online. Uh, well, in this section will be thirty-five oh eight, and I suppose you're just going to, what's the title of this? It's like definition?
And it's going to say these definitions apply only to Article thirty-five.
There it is.
So these definitions supersede then the ones that are in Article Four?
Right.
And it'll say that, okay.
Only if they're.
In this article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it won't apply to any of these articles. That needs to be. The other two that were submitted as a part of the original thirty-five, we will have those if they get approved, we will put those into, uh, the definition section. Okay? That, we've done that before. The other def, the new, the other definitions that we added have become part of Article Four. But, uh, only ten will be part of Article Four tonight. All right, anything else, uh, relating to Article thirty-five and the discussion? If not, then we will recess uh, the hearing, and we need to recess it to a date of time certain. We're looking at, um, the fifth, we talked about that already, now we have to look at time. Uh, I think we have, um, a hearing scheduled for later Clark at seven forty-five.
The agenda also has meeting locations. Is that, is that changing before we schedule all of this?
Well, I had that down, that we were on, we were convening, I was going to talk about that. We don't have to move now. We're going to stay here.
Okay.
Because strategic planning has decided to have them the same time, but they're going to be finished by seven fifteen.
Okay.
Right, Tom?
Sure.
Um, okay, so what shall we say? September five at, you want to say eight o'clock? Uh, I don't know how quickly we will, uh, address, uh, Mr. Clark's hearing, but we can start a few minutes later. I don't. I would prefer to do it that way as opposed to making it like.
From Mr. Clark to updated papers from Mr. Clark. Can we give those tonight? Perfect, thank you. Then, yeah, I think we're.
That's not part of the hearing that we, yeah. I asked about, I am responding to a question, but yes, we'll, we'll come back and talk about that.
Yeah, I think if we have those papers and everything, that should show us fairly quickly.
I want to know about, it, it, eight P M.
Yeah.
September five.
Yep.
Uh, all those are scheduled to be set to September five, eight P M. A hearing on Article thirty-five, they can probably say, yes, aye. So as well, we are recessed, uh, and with that, then I'd like to bring the, yes, uh, special meeting back out. And we'll call the room again.
All right. Mike Coward.
Aye, here.
Wait, all right. Joni Manson, Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Tom Heed.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
All right, thank you. So now we're back in session and, um, for the location, we've already addressed that. Uh, we are going to be here in, at seven thirty, the, uh, your hearing, Mr. Clark, is scheduled for seven forty-five.
Here.
Here. Um, and now, uh, the question was asked about the documents that you, uh, were going to be bringing in. You have them ready to present to us tonight? Are you giving them to Mike?
I got them.
Do you want to take them during the meeting?
Yeah, if, um, if they're available, because there's four of us here, we'll take them tonight. Then when he has to drive over, we pick them up.
Uh, let me ask E D, um, Tuesday the fifth, um, strategic planning will be meeting six thirty to seven thirty. Uh, and then you'll have to shut down Zoom, or somebody will, and then restart it again with the zoning commission. Different, a different one.
Yeah.
Fifty minutes.
That's funny. It's going to be, it's going to be more for the people who want to join the meeting than for me.
Great, thank you. And then all that, yeah. Anything else we're currently doing? Um, they are, um, we are, we are scheduled to have, uh, a meeting on the fifth, so we will just open that meeting. This one doesn't have to be reset. You can close this regularly or specially. You don't have to reset it.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Oh, my goodness, and Paul's seconded. All right, all those are papers, and somebody say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we go. Okay, what is your, are you all back on the table?
It's telling Tom we're getting faster and faster. These, these people coming, it's all right.
Now, Holly's going to be working.
Molly will be, I cannot give her.
It should go smoothly.
There were way fewer concerns with this one than there were with previous ones that have done it before, so I think.
There's work, you have, uh, the meeting heard right already.